Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, June 8th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, will you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch, here. Councilmember King, here. Councilmember Squires, here. Councilmember Kerwin, here. Councilmember McCarge, here. Councilmember Arnowski, here.
Okay, our next item is item four, approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the June 8th, 2015 meeting as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Arnowski. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnowski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Now we will have, under community events, we will have a special recognition. This is one of the better parts of being the mayor, getting to do things like this. We have a young lady from our hometown, from Garden City, that played baseball here in Garden City, Garden City High School, and she went on to play for the University of Michigan, went to the NCAA Division One World Series last week, and we're darn proud of her. Coach Barry Patterson from Garden City High School wanted to be here so bad, but he has a regional meeting with all the coaches that he's the host of, and he couldn't get out of it, so he wanted me to read this. This is from your high school coach. First, I would like to say that it's my privilege and my honor to have the opportunity to coach Kelsey for her amazing four-years career at Garden City High School. She'll probably never know that she did more for me than I could ever possibly hope her to do so. She came every day with a great attitude, work ethic, commitment to excellence. She had the unique ability to make all those around her better players and better teammates. When Kelsey came into Garden City as a freshman, I could see a lot of potential, but by the time her junior season rolled around, you could see she was destined for greatness. She went on to receive many prestigious awards during her career at Garden City, including becoming a two-time All-Stater. For me, though, the greatest experience I shared with Kelsey was having the opportunity to watch her mature and blossom from the shy, somewhat gangly ninth grader I first met to the confident, world-class softball player and young woman you see here today. Lastly, I'd like to say above all else, whether on the softball field or in the classroom or out in the community, Kelsey has always proven herself to be a winner. Congratulations, Kelsey, on a great memorable season. Go Blue and go Cougars, Coach Barry Patterson. Now, I want to read a resolution of recognition to Kelsey Susala. Whereas Garden City has been long recognized for some of the best softball teams and players in the state of Michigan, and whereas Kelsey Susala graduated from Garden City High School in 2012 as a four-year honor roll and Scholar-Athlete, four-year varsity letter winner, Michigan Miss Softball nominee, two-time First Team All-State, three-time All-Area Selection, three-time All-Region Selection, four-time All-District and All-League Selection, three-time Team Most Valuable Player while leading Garden City to two-state championship appearances, and whereas Kelsey joined the University of Michigan Wolverines softball team in 2013 and immediately contributed batting .315 with five home runs and 24 RBIs as a freshman. She batted .347 and scored a run in the Super Regional as a sophomore, and came into her own during her junior year with a .380 batting average, pounding 14 home runs and driving 61 RBIs. And whereas, with Kelsey batting cleanup with the Wolverines, advanced all the way to the final game of the 2015 College World Series, with Kelsey driving in the only run in the Michigan Game Two win over Florida. Now therefore, the mayor and city council do hereby recognize the efforts and accomplishments of Kelsey Susala and her Michigan Wolverine teammates on coming in within one victory of the NCAA Division One Softball Championship, and on behalf of the citizens, applaud her sportsmanship, athleticism, and competitive spirit. We are so proud of your accomplishments, and definitely you put Garden City in the limelight. Watching those games, I don't know what it was, but when you come up to bat, they would say, "Kelsey Susala from Garden City, Michigan." Almost every time you came to bat, they, on ESPN, they mentioned Garden City, Michigan. The other girls would come up to bat, and they would just say their name and what position they played or whatever, but for some reason, when you come up, it was always followed by Garden City, Michigan, so you definitely put us in the limelight, and we're very proud of you, and this is the kicker that you don't know. We want to invite you to be the grand marshal for our Sand Land Parade this November. Mr. Dan York asked me to ask you, so he said, "Keep the surprise to you," right at the podium, so we'd like you to be our grand marshal this year at the parade, so. What an honor meeting you. You made our cities so proud. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, next under community events, we have Kim Dolb.
Thank you. We were watching and rooting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Follow that up.
I was just going to say, follow that.
I just wanted to quickly remind everyone of our flag dedication ceremony tomorrow, Flag Flag Pole Dedication. It's at 7:00 PM tomorrow, Garden City Commons, that is the northwest corner of Middle Belt and Ford Road. We will have guest speaker Senator David Kneeseck, and following, there will be appetizers at Albert's. And then on Saturday, we're also having the Garden City Flea Circus, that's in the old farmer's market lot south of Kroger's there, and that is from 10 to 3:00, so we hope everybody can make both events, especially tomorrow, it'll be a special event. Thank you.
Next, we have James Lynch, Garden City Library Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Garden City residents. The school year is winding down. That means summer reading is gearing up. This year's theme is, "Every Hero Has a Story." The Garden City Public Library has something for everyone, all age groups from preschool, elementary school, teens, and adults. Stop by, it's all free. Just sign up today. The programs start June 24th, but you can sign up today already. There are prizes, and there's entertainment, and there are lots of good books. The library is located, of course, in the Maplewood Community Center on Maplewood Road. The library entrance is actually off of the Balmoral side of the building, there's plenty of parking. The library hours are Monday through Thursday from 10 till 8:00, and Friday and Saturday from noon to 5:00. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Nancy Bailey and her team of volunteers who came out and cleaned up the flower beds and planted the annuals again this year around the library. They make the library look great, and they did a marvelous job for us once again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Okay, next, we have comments from state and county officials. I see we have Mr. LeBlanc here from Wayne County. You have any words of wisdom for us?
No, when you put it that way.
That's a lot of pressure.
Mayor, thanks for allowing me an opportunity to speak very briefly. What I would say is this, excuse me, most in the news today involving Wayne County is the proposed tax levy judgment against all property owners that have ownership within Wayne County. And as many of you may know, last Thursday, the Wayne County Commission, in a nine to five vote, nine voting in favor, five voting against, elected to utilize funds from a different portion of our available revenue so that the taxpayers would not see a special tax levy. However, the following day, the county executive vetoed that act, so the Wayne County Commission, at least as of today, is proposed to meet specifically for the purpose of a potential veto override on June 16th. It'll be a public meeting, of course. If the commission does not have sufficient support to override the executive veto, then taxpayers can expect, all of us can expect, to pay extra for an issue that occurred in 2010, and it's an issue that I didn't get to vote on. I wasn't there, of course, at that time. I didn't get to vote on it last week. You don't get to vote on it, none of us get to vote on it. It's my sincere hope that the commission will secure 10 affirmative votes to override the veto, but as of today, we don't have 10 votes to do that. So, there's probably a lot of conversation occurring amongst a select few people, but after that, I'd be glad to come back to report the results of what happened, and between now and then, I'd be pleased to answer any questions regarding that today. It is obviously the thing that we are most challenged with at this minute, but it's Wayne County, so well, I'm sure we'll have another one in another month.
Appreciate you keeping us posted. Mayor? Mr. Kerwin?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, the vote was nine to five?
Yes, yes.
So, they need one more member, is that correct?
Um, well, simple math would say yes, but I will tell you this, that although I've been asked for discretion, one of the nine members has indicated that they would not support a veto override, which is odd to me. I definitely, I voted, you know, yes at that time, I'll vote yes on June 16th, but we need 10.
All right, so if you don't, what does that mean to the average property owner or homeowner?
Yeah, so there are-
And what happened in 2010?
Yeah, in 2010, the then-executive and the then-Wayne County Commission agreed to spend $32 million that was to have gone into the Wayne County Pension Fund to pay for what they refer to as the 13th check, which is really bizarre to me, but anyway. So, they elected to not remit payment to the pension fund and spend it elsewhere. The pension folks sued Wayne County. Over the course of the past five years, it was decided this way, then it was decided that way, finally, the Supreme Court recently weighed in in a unanimous verdict that Wayne County must pay it back. It was $32 million, but the judgment increased to $49 million because of perceived ability to generate additional revenue from that $32 million. So, it is what it is, but I mentioned just a second ago that there were conflicting reports. Because of the way that finances work, some of the money is restricted and dedicated, other portions of it are not. The executive offered a public comment, I believe it was today, actually, that if the levy itself does occur, that it is not proposed to go for the entire $49 million, it would be a handful of million less than that, so they would not populate these restricted funds. And it's mechanical, I mean, it's a lot of legalese. In very general terms, the average $100,000 valued property in Wayne County, if assessed at the total amount for $49 million, would be approximately $62. It's a one-time levy, it would potentially or probably occur this year, and your clerk treasurer and I have had a conversation about this last week. She was kind enough to reach out to me to ask a few things, and we shared some information. So, it is proposed to be one time. I don't think that makes it any better, I really don't. And we have learned that, in a technical sense, what happened is this, the court said, "Okay, you owe $49 million." The county, through its chief executive, the county executive, said, "We don't have it." Then, the court says, "Well, then, you shall have placed upon you a tax levy for the judgment." Again, that requires no vote of anybody, but once the county formally indicated they don't have any money, that's what happens. Then the Wayne County Commission found out about it, and again, all this happened like within a day, and the commission said, "We will schedule a vote to identify the money and allocate it." The executive does not support the allocation of those monies, even though it's the legal right of the Wayne County Commission to make that determination, so it's a whole lot of stuff, it really is. But the money is in fact available to pay, and we would wish to use that $49 million as opposed to taxing additionally every property owner in the county.
All right, what about, oh, go ahead. What about the budget and the jail?
So, the budget has not been presented to the Wayne County Commission as of today.
Okay.
Many of us had hoped that we would have more time to work on it before the September 30th deadline, but we simply don't have it. The jail, as you know, it's another very complex matter, and the executive is reviewing several options that would probably be new to him and his team, because they've not been there. The, if I were to consolidate it all into a couple of statements or sentences, it would go like this. "We have $160 million invested in an unfinished jail project. We pay about $1 million a month for security and interest on the bonds that were secured." That $1 million is never going to stop until the 160 is paid back. There's an offer that's been received on the property of approximately $20 million. You know, you invest 160, you sell it for 20, doesn't on the surface seem to make sense. And we have two other downtown Wayne County jails that are really in deplorable condition. My understanding is that when the Wayne County Commission made the decision to build a new jail, for the most part, all reasonable expenditures, all maintenance expenditures, except for those that were absolutely dire, were not made to the existing two jails in anticipation of a new building, and they're in really, really rough shape. I visited somewhat recently and was pretty embarrassed, actually, that that's what we have, irrespective of those who have been accused and criminals who have received convictions at a lower rate than would send them to a prison. The fact is, it really does seem to be less than wholly humane. I mean, it's bad, and I don't mind saying it, because it's not a secret. So, you have the jail, you have the budget that we don't have, you have this issue, there's just a lot of things that we're dealing with. There are employee negotiations that are ongoing, and we have about a $35 million structural deficit, and in the mid-70s in terms of an accumulated deficit, which by the way, when I began my service, our accumulated deficit was about $220 million. So, we are in a better position, and the executive, I wish to be very forthright, the executive would wish to apply that $49 million to the accumulated deficit to bring it down, and I think that's noble, I do, but I still wholly disagree with the tax levy.
What are your plans, what's the commission's plans? I mean, paying $1 million a month?
But that was always expected. Again, you know, I didn't serve there at that time, but they knew we were going to build a jail, it was going to cost this amount of money, they secured bonding for it, the plan was to consolidate, to close the other buildings, and that the savings would help generate the revenue necessary to pay back the bond, but none of that has happened. The only thing that's happened is we spent $156 million. I rounded up, because that's okay.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah. I know the clerk treasurer had something she was going to bring out.
I'm good.
Got it, okay.
Anything else from Ms. LeBlanc?
I do have a question. I know the county executive wants to use that money to lower the deficit, so again, we understand that's not all bad.
Right.
If it is not used, what do you foresee is, where are they going to come up with that money? What are they going to have to cut?
Well, again, we're talking about the accumulated deficit, so this is the money that over the course of many years has piled up. So, we pay for that in different ways, but as I mentioned, it's a third of what it was, so our costs are not what they once were, and it would be good if we could get the accumulated deficit paid off. It'd be like paying that old mortgage on a property that you, you know, no longer own, for better description, lack of better description, but I don't really have a proposal. Really, it's this exact issue. If we don't apply the $49 million out of that fund to satisfy this judgment to the pension folks, you will receive a levy, and you're not going to get to vote on it, you will pay it. I was challenged and asked by some folks, "What if I don't pay it?" "I'm not going to pay it." It is no different than any other part of your property tax bill. You don't get to select, "I want to pay for schools, I don't want to pay for streetlights, I want to pay for this, I don't want to pay for that." You either pay the bill or you don't, and if you don't, you are subjected to potential foreclosure and other issues. So, in this instance, in this very specific instance, the judgment will either be paid by the $49 million per the allocation the commission decided last week, or it will be decided beginning, you know, June 17th, if we can't override the veto on your tax bill. That's it.
Ms. Lynch?
I just wanted to throw a comment out there. Back when then-county exec wanted to sell the water department back to the communities, we were told that Wayne County owns the water department. Now that Wayne County gets a judgment bond, now the people are being charged for the judgment bond. I don't think Wayne County really knows who these things belong to and who they don't belong to.
You know, that's an interesting observation. The documentation that we received, of course, the formal documentation verifies that the subject in consideration, the portions of the water treatment facilities belong to Wayne County. I know that it's an argument, and I know that at some point it may be settled by somebody else, but that's the documentation that we received. This is a different issue. It was a spending decision by the executive and the legislative body. You know, I have said both, not both, but I've said at that public meeting where we took the vote, I said on the radio recently, I said at both coffee hours this morning, I will be contacting my state legislators to find out if there's a different vehicle that can satisfy. What happens when there's spending decisions that are contrary to really good financial practice? It was not a unanimous vote when they did it. Some folks said, "This will haunt us," and they reminded the commission last week.
I bet they did.
But, you know, if you really, really, really go further back, 13th check, and I know I'm going to get myself into some hot water with some people, but there's 12 months in a year, and if you're a pensioner and you receive a pension, most people get one check per month or 12. The county at one point thought that they had so much money, they were flush with it, that they could give a 13th check, and it's that 13th check that contributed to the greatest degree in this entire issue, and it is that 13th check that, and the way that it came about that caused these levels of the court, if I can say it that way, to affirm that the county owed the money. Really, it goes, all goes back to the 13th check, and it's not a secret, our pension fund is underfunded by a couple of dollars shy of a billion dollars. It's crazy. Yeah. So, thank you for allowing me to share that one topic that took up such a large amount of time. As always, I'm available via telephone, email, you know, stop me at the hardware store, whatever, just chat about that more.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Item nine, the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items nine, A, one, and two.
Support.
Councilmember Arnowski? Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnowski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to our study session. Item B1, purchase sewer jet cleaning truck for DPS?
C.
C.
C? Supplemental appropriation, drunk-driving caseflow assistance?
C.
Item three, BS and A, assessing software purchase?
C.
Item four, purchase of body cameras for the police department?
C.
Okay, we'll move on to the C agenda. C1, purchase of a sewer jet cleaning truck for DPS.
Mayor?
Ms. King?
I move to authorize purchase of a jet truck in the amount of $208,203 from Jack Dohany, Dohany Companies of Northville, Michigan, in accordance with pricing obtained through the National Joint Purchasing Alliance.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. This is a capital improvement purchase that was in this year's capital improvement spending. This is a water jet truck to jet our sanitary sewers, unclog them where needed, and that's the reason for the purchase. Any other discussion from the table? Ms. Lynch?
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Roney. What you don't probably realize is normally they would get a truck that both sucks out the sewers as well as jets the sewers, and our current truck is not able to jet it, but it can do the vacuuming of it. So, because we weren't going to get as much as they had hoped for a trade-in, they decided to get a separate truck to save us money and to continue using that piece of equipment until it finally runs out of fuel. until it finally runs out of life. So I'd like to congratulate you for thinking that way and saving money where you can, but yet having all the equipment we need to take care of the city.
Anybody else from the table? From the general public? Mr. Baco?
We've got one, we've got one in a, I'll call them, got one truck. Why are you another one?
This is a water jet truck.
Same thing, the same, we got another.
Well, when, when people have, uh, water backing up in their, in their basements...
We got one, we got one.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
The jet portion of it does not work. The jet portion does not work. So you have...
No. No.
Thank you, Mr. Baco. Mr. Buckner?
I have a couple of questions, um, probably can't answer them or it gets back to me. When I look at the docket here from Murray, talking about the trade-in, and I understand why they didn't do the trade-in because it wasn't getting what they thought was, uh, a good amount, and that's fine. But did they even consider, uh, purchasing, since they were buying a unit, purchasing another one? 'Cause sometimes, you know, when you buy two units, you get a better deal. So I'm wondering if that was even thought about doing. And then later on, they could've sold the other one or gave it to a, a city that may need it. Um, and I, when I looked over at the cost of these, um, and I'm wondering why, on the upgrade of the tank, uh, as good as it is, it's a 1,500 gallon tank, um, we end up paying 2,350 dollars more for a three-year warranty when we're already was getting a seven. I mean, is there, uh, ev- evidence of there's problems with those tanks after seven years? It comes with a standard seven years, and normally we know how things work, just like a hot water tank. You get five years, well, then after that, you're on your own. But usually a water tank can last fifteen, twenty years. And I'm, I'm concerned because when I did some Googling on this tank, um, there was, I didn't see no issues with it. The materials it was made out of, uh, was way good, and I'm just wondering, 'cause I mean, yeah, we're spending, um, 208,000 dollars, and doesn't seem much when you think about 2,350, but, you know, um, every penny counts, especially when it's taxpayers' money. Um, also too, um, I was looking at the, uh, warranty on that, then I might, came to my mind, what about the other equipment, the truck itself, whatever? Does it have a warranty? And if so, what kind? Uh, there's really no information on that as well. And then the on-site, um, training is for one day, it costs 1,450, and that, that makes sense. But how many DPW workers is it training? Okay, and is Mr. Kevin Rooney, is he gonna be in on the training, since he's the head of the department? Um, I know it would make sense that surely he should be there to see some of the things going on. And it makes sense to have more than, uh, a couple people knowing how to operate just because of the fact of medical vacations. So that's just some things to throw out there for thought. And then when I looked at the units, you know, 99,000, and the options, and the freight, and, uh, just some thoughts, I just thought I'd bring it up, and, uh, maybe somebody can enlighten me on this. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Arneski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item C2?
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation recognizing revenues for drunk driving caseflow assistance, increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of 14,984 dollars.
Support. Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Arneski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item C3? Mayor? Councilmember Kerwin?
Is this the body cameras? I mean...
No, this is the assessing software.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody else can take it.
Oh, wait, your honor.
Councilmember Squires?
I move, I move to approve the purchase of BSNAAssessing.net software in the amount of 11,340 dollars, and to authorize the execution of any necessary documents by the city clerk treasurer.
Support.
Support from, uh, Councilmember King. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Mr. Baco?
What is it?
It's soft, computer software.
Every year, you come, come there, huh? Every year, owe money, huh? You have, that's it, same thing, over, over again.
It, it costs money to run a city, Mr. Baco.
Every year, you do that. You have, that's it, same thing, same thing, over. Every year, you do same thing. Spend the money, but, but hard, hard spend the money, huh?
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember, Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Arneski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item C4, Mr. Kerwin, are you ready?
Yes, sir. I got the right order now. I move to approve the purchase of 25 action body worn cameras along with supporting data storage system in the amount of 29,722 dollars and 75 cents from Taser, a sole source supplier.
Support.
As long as somebody else will explain it to Mr. Baco, 'cause he's gonna wanna know.
Do you hear me?
Support from Councilmember Ornowski. Discussion from the table. This has been getting a lot of visibility, uh, this last year, if you look at all the things that happened in Baltimore and Ferguson, Missouri, uh, this could actually save the city, uh, money from false, false accusations on our police department. Camera doesn't lie, so, uh, this could be, uh, in the long run, save us, uh, money. And it's, uh, it, the video tells the story, so.
This was a CIP?
Yep.
And, Mayor, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Zimmer for finding out the promotion for saving us an additional 2,500 dollars, so thank you if it's purchased, so please get on it this week.
In fact, Lieutenant Zimmer's gonna wear two of them.
Just for camp council meeting.
Any other discussion from the table? From the general public?
Once again, it's about the money. It comes out that you're paying 11, 1,188 dollars and 91 cents each for these. Um, that was for 25. Now, since all the cities around us are doing the same thing, and I'm sure that, you know, the city manager in chief of police communicates with the other departments around, why didn't they come up with a plan to, hey, let's get our heads together here so that we can buy more and save more? Canton just purchased 30, and they got theirs at 27,900 dollars apiece. We're paying 288 dollars and 91 cents more, and we're only getting 25. Now, I'd like someone to explain to me, I understand having 25, it would be turned out to be like Baltimore and them, but we never see 25 officers down on our streets at one time. And surely, just like, they're like walkies that I use at work, that when I go off duty, I pass up a ton, and the next manager can take the walk. Now, in the, uh, what Mr. Zimmerman did here, and it's great what he did, and got savings of the hundred dollars, um, he went on based on 2013 complaints, there was only four complaints that these could have, um, you know, played into role on this, and I can see why that would, you know, hey, you know, maybe we need to get these cameras. Don't get me wrong, I think it's a good thing, but did we need 25? I mean, I'm, that's really stressing it when, uh, you never see 25 patrol cars out. In the day, I mean, you were back years ago, they used to camp out at the church above me, they used to camp out at the, uh, Dr. Zimmerman's office, who's now is a heart doctor. But I don't see that no more. But I still see, you know, three or four around town, but I just, I'm wondering, 25? Do we really need 25 of them? I mean, that's a lot of money, uh, to be spending on that. Okay, so, um, just all I throw out there for food for thought, maybe in the future, when we're doing something that other cities and other departments are doing, that we put our heads together and, uh, and see what we're, uh, can come up with to get a, a better deal. And then on top of that, you gotta remember, 'cause you bought 25 of them, now you've gotta spend 8,484 dollars every year for the licensing and the, and the gigabyte storage. So you've got an ongoing expense, uh, if you think about it, in a few years, gonna out total...
You have 10 seconds.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Keep throwing around a number of, uh, 25 cameras, that's an awful lot. I would assume probably, chief, when you're, uh, you guys are out there working, once in a while, something's probably gonna get broken, probably have, gonna, gonna have to go in for service. If a walkie-talkie or Krogers goes down, probably not a real issue. Equipment out on the road, batteries have to be recharged, equipment has to be maintained. Get the 25 that you need so that we have the equipment out there. All it's gonna take is one lawsuit. It'll take care of the cost of every single one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Muller?
I think it's a cheap price. Uh, I'm not interested in protecting the crooks, but the police officers that have to make the arrest and get accused of everything, no matter what happens, it's always the policeman's fault. So I think it's a cheap price to protect our policemen, to hell with the crooks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Arneski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will now move on to our public comments. Uh, this is for items that were not on the agenda, there's a five-minute time limit. If you wish to speak, come to the podium, state your name. This is not the time to engage in conversation back and forth with council members.
I'll make it short and sweet tonight before I leave. I'm glad that the, uh, commission was here to bring us up to date. If you remember a few weeks ago, or go back and look, I pretty much brought up about everything except the voting on this, and saying how that Wayne County, um, was having major problems. I even broke it down for you, the cost of what they were going through, and how that it relates to us as well, maybe in a smaller factor, for the simple reason, the legacy cost. They're having, uh, problems with it, and we're overlooking it here. Uh, you can say that you're, uh, putting pennies in it, but I'm, you're, uh, costing us probably a million dollars a year, and later on, I'm gonna bring some figures out to back up what I'm talking about. But you also have to remember that, um, the foreclosure situation that I brought up, and Ms. King here, being the brilliant, uh, realtor that she is, knows pretty well what I'm talking about, that when a foreclosure takes place, Wayne County comes in and takes over. But what happens if Wayne County gets in a situation and they're not able to, to give us our tax money? I mean, uh, city manager's really not gonna have no chance to even grow any hair back because he's gonna try to figure out, where is the revenue coming from? That's another revenue that can be hurt us in the future. And another thing too, you gotta remember, when they pay us and the homes don't sell, they don't auction off, they got two and a half years, they can come back and ask for a payback. All right, uh, we'll move on to a couple other things. This past weekend, there was three incidents, I'd just like to get some clarification on, and the one I don't know about. And that's the one where I heard that there was two patrol cars, uh, chasing another car down a suburban street at high speed. And I don't know if that's true, I haven't, some people said they had a picture of it, I haven't seen it yet, but I mean, I, I don't know what the norm is. I know we don't want them to get away, um, but I mean, down the side street, um, the kids are out, and from what I understand, it was pretty, uh, pretty drastic what they were doing. That's one thing. Uh, the other one was, um, the state police, I seen two or three state police down in the, uh, park, um, with the, uh, Garden City Police. And that'd be nice for the chief to enlighten us exactly, you know, what took place there that, uh, that, you know, none of this stuff ever gets reported in the papers, and actually, if you called, they're not gonna tell you at the dispatch office, and I don't blame them. I mean, they refer everything to the chief, and, uh, we're not gonna get nothing back. Uh, but it, it'd be nice to know, why was the state police and Garden City Police at the park? What's interesting is, you had people there that were practicing ball, probably 20 feet away, when they arrested the man. Why? You know, you know, I mean, if it's a situation, when you're pulling someone over like that, and you've got four or five police cars, and we know nowadays that most people, criminals, use guns. So when you got families around, and maybe that's why he went into the park, he figured, hey, you know, they're not gonna bother me here, but that didn't stop him, and it shouldn't have, but, uh, I hope that he alluded to that fact. And, uh, excuse me for leaving tonight, and this is my prerogative, whenever I want to leave, I can, 'cause I can go home and listen to you. Uh, don't think it's any disrespect, because I can't get back up and respond to what you have to say, okay? So, and if I'm at home, I can set terms, my shoes off, and I don't like what you're saying, I can always mute it. Okay? So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do they have...
Mr. Baco?
Do they have, uh, please, please, cameras, cameras? Please, come, cameras?
Cameras for the police car, what about the...
Do they have, uh, please, come?
No.
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 Thank you. Anybody else?
It appears that we're headed for a, uh, another great event tomorrow night with a flagpole dedication, and our good friend, Senator Koenig is the keynote speaker on that. And that's another nice thing happening in Garden City. I believe we have successful, although I don't have any details on it, graduation last weekend. So we have a lot of kids that we can be proud of, their achievements. I wasn't able to be there 'cause my own grandson was graduating in Brighton at the same time. But, uh, just seems to be an endless stream of good events and great things going on in Garden City, and it just makes me glad that I can be part of that community.
Thank you. Anybody else? City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few odds and ends. First, regarding the pursuit to which, um, actually, let me back up a minute. City council allows me the luxury of not feeling it necessary to pick up the phone and tell them every time an ambulance goes on a run, a fire truck responds to a fire or a police officer takes police action. I do report to council on high incidents, as you are aware. Uh, the pursuit to which, uh, I believe Buckner, since I'm Murray, he, Buckner, the pursuit to which Buckner was alluding, uh, was a pursuit that started in Westland, traveled through Garden City, ended up in Dearborn Heights. Uh, I don't know what car was speeding down a side street. Our officers are trained in emergency vehicle operations, any pursuits we engage in are carefully monitored by a supervisor, they're called off whenever, uh, conditions are considered to be hazardous. Uh, the reason for the pursuit is also taken into account, in this particular case, that car was a suspect car in a kidnapping. Man, I'm sorry I didn't call Mr. Buckner and tell him. Regarding the incident at Garden City Park, uh, I can, I received a phone call from Ms. Sue Buck, from the Observer, inquiring about this very same incident. An anonymous caller called her and reported it. I contacted, I had, uh, command contact each of the officers that was on duty on Saturday night at approximately 9:15, when this incident is alleged to have occurred. I also contacted the commander. This incident didn't occur. There weren't two Garden City cars at Garden City Park with three Michigan State Police cars. They just simply weren't there. Two of the cars had been involved in something else, and the other two guys just weren't there. I can't report to council or call Mr. Buckner at home to tell him about something that we're not involved in. Other police agencies do come into our city from time to time. Council should have received a memo from Mr. Roney with the additional information on the Hubbard project. I think, and, Mr. Roney, please don't let me put words in your mouth, but I think basically the end result of recalculating these costs is that perhaps we shouldn't do this project at all, that we should bank this, save it, combine it with money from the next year, sort of recharge the fund to allow us to do a larger project or a more complete project. I wanted to bring it up tonight in case there was any other conversation on it, in case council wanted to say that's not the direction we want to go in. But I believe that's where we stand. Mr. Roney, I hadn't put words in your mouth that way. So if we, if we receive no other direction, that's what's going to happen. We'll, we'll bank that money to combine it with more money. Who knows what might come from the state. Finally, I want to update city council on the Great Raccoon Roundup. I'm sure you saw us on TV. Home infested with raccoons. We did get live traps out there. Since Thursday, we have taken into custody 10 raccoons and one opossum that wandered through the wrong neighborhood. We continue to work with the homeowner. We're trying to resolve that problem. It is, it is receiving our attention every day. Every day, we've collected at least two and sometimes three. And the opossum was just a wild card. I don't know where he came from. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kerwin?
Yes, Your Honor. Are you sure that was a possum?
I have pictures.
All right. The only thing I have tonight is happy birthday to my wife, and I will take you out to dinner later. Other than that, I don't have anything. And I thank you for the report. And just so everybody does know, I think if it's anything rather, I mean, I don't need to know where every police car is at every minute. I mean, but anything important, I think I'm pretty well taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarge?
And I agree. I thank you for keeping us up to date. We do receive communication. And if the state police and the Garden City Police are in City Park, good. They're doing their job. They're doing whatever, they're taking care of whatever needs to be taken care of. So that's not negative. Just, it's, it's too bad that misinformation seems to get out there an awful lot. Just to remind people that the city has, has been working on the legacy cost. Remember, employees were paying 6% into their pension funds. Now they're paying 12% into their pension funds. So it is something that we, as a city, and city employees are taking very seriously. Again, legacy costs, to me, are not necessarily negative. Our employees, when they work, if you work at the car companies, if you work at, you know, many places, you retire and you receive a pension. That's not necessarily a negative thing. But, but this city has been working hard to keep those costs contained. On a real positive note, again, I'm going to remind you that the Garden City Garden Club is having their annual garden walk on Saturday, June 20th, which is less than two weeks away. We're saying that because we have gardens, gardeners here that we know are working hard in their gardens. Tickets can be purchased in advance at Barson's Greenhouse or at Lucky Dog Daycare. They can be picked up in advance or the day of the walk at Barson's Greenhouse. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Oh, I would concur with everything you've already said, quite honestly. And thank you, Mr. Murray, for all your help, because you do keep us in touch with everything that's going on, at least what we need to know. And also on the legacy cost, I totally agree. We've worked on that. We're still working on it. You will never get rid of them completely. And there is a way that we've indulged ourselves as far as helping when we hire new people now. We have gotten rid of some of the legacy costs that way that could be attributed later on. So things have to be worked out slowly. They don't just go away. And if they do, it's going to cost you a lot more money. So that being that, I have nothing else to say, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lynch?
Just wanted to remind people, school will be out very shortly, next couple of days. Watch out for small children now that will be playing in the streets, on the sidewalks as you're backing out of your driveway. You have to keep your eyes open for them now. And I want to wish my husband a happy retirement. He finally did it.
Did he? Ah, congratulations.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Just a couple of things. Just wanted to let Mr. Baco know that I did talk to our city manager in regards to the vehicles that are for sale in that empty lot. And we're looking into it. I'm going to take care of whatever is wrong. Okay? And I guess there was one more added to that in the bakery parking lot with no plates. Also, congratulations to Kelsey. We're so proud of you, even though you left. Hopefully, you'll end up watching the whole show. And it's an honor that you have been chosen to be our grand marshal for our parade. You know, that takes one load off of the parade committee. And I attended the coffee hour today and was very, very well attended, I think. And they're still not sure if there's going to be one this coming month. Did you find out? There will be one. Okay? And I encourage, as many, you know, all residents to take the time at 11 o'clock on the second Monday of July and come out and talk to your county commissioner, your senator, and your state representative. You can ask them anything, and they'll tell you about anything. Pretty much. And I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Aronaski?
The only thing I have, and I think Mrs. Squires might have covered it, because I had a couple of residents ask me about Warren Inkster, so I'm assuming that's what you guys were talking about, the used cars, and that they were back. So I'm glad to hear that it's going to be addressed, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bettis?
I just wanted to let residents know that we're having, Wayne County is having another household hazardous waste collection. It's going to be on Saturday, June 20th. It's going to be at Henry Ford College over in Dearborn, just south of Ford Road on Evergreen. And you can bring your hazardous waste materials and your electronic things that need to be recycled. Any resident of Wayne County is there, and there's no charge for it. So you can look forward to that. It's from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, June 20th. Also, Wayne County is offering a free breast and cervical checkup, mammogram, and follow-up if needed to people without, to women without health insurance from 40 to 64. And they meet the appropriate guidelines. You can look online at www.bccp.org, or you can call toll-free 888-242-2702. And Kelsey, I know you don't know me very well, but I just want to know, I want you to know how proud we are of you, Garden City girls. So this is how proud we are of you. Go Blue.
That took a lot.
That's all, ma'am.
Kelsey, if you're watching, I can tell you, that hurt her to do that.
She's a Go Green lady.
Again, congratulations. What a, what a great city we have. We've got great people. What an honor that was to do that tonight. So proud of her. No further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.